Roll call vote, Mr. Waldron.
Hi.
Mr. Yan.
Hi.
Mr. Johnson.
Hi.
Mr. Drenses.
Hi.
I vote aye. Okay, 5-0, so we're back in open session. David, are there people waiting to come in?
Yep, let me get them.
Steve Barber, do you have time for a quick call tomorrow on some of the land use stuff?
Sure, absolutely. Do you want Lee involved too?
No, I'll just email you and I'd just like to touch base with you on a couple of things.
Sure, anytime. I think anytime. And just looking for my calendar.
Depends when your cat says you're available. I'm in the middle of a board meeting. We don't have 10 members on our Board of Directors. My cat puts her rear end right up to the wall.
My, I have a Westie who's just turned 14 years old. And he's now taking advantage because my office is up in a guest room upstairs and he can't climb stairs anymore on his own. If he knows I'm up here, he stands at the bottom of the stairs and barks until somebody brings him up and puts him on the guest bed so he can sleep in here.
Right. Now, I've got a dog and three cats, so if I can get through a Zoom meeting without interruption, it's a good day.
Okay, I can see one. Do you guys notice I checked out of this meeting for a few minutes? My cat walked in with a live mouse.
Hey, that's a good cat earning his keep.
That's right. A lot of drama. Then the other cat got interested, then we had to run around, and yeah, so sorry about that.
I figured where you went.
Glad we're recording now, of course, but yeah, so it was a funny incident tonight.
You must live in the country. Mike Gemma bought our house on Coursebrook. He wanted me to certify that there was no rodent infestation.
Lucky that in Sherburne.
I certified that in fact there has been, and you need to get a cast.
Sue Calhoun is there. Should I admit her, David? Are you doing it?
Yeah, go ahead. I've gotten texts to Tricia, Sue, Chris.
Chris was ready for bed an hour and a half ago.
I know.
I unmuted you, Sue. I didn't know, because nobody's really muted because there's so few of us now.
Okay, thank you.
I guess, should I wait a few more minutes or can we just go ahead?
I think you need to wait for them.
I mean, we're in open session, so in theory, someone could call in and join. But I think it's better to wait if you can for a couple of minutes, yeah.
I took the lock off and I closed the waiting room.
And Chuck went to the beach.
I think I need better lighting in this room.
The northern tip of the North Island in New Zealand, no COVID-19.
Yeah, nice.
Wow. They did mainly the South Island.
There's Tricia.
Hi, Tricia. Hello, Tricia. You're muted.
Hang on, let me try and fix that. There you go, oops.
There you go. Welcome back.
Okay, hi.
I think we're just waiting for Chris.
Yes. I just hung up with her and said, I hope she's coming on.
I know we're keeping her up late. She wanted to go to bed an hour and a half ago.
I'm right with her. I don't know. It's all right.
You don't have to drive anywhere. You could just go upstairs.
There's no commute.
Right.
I have found that I sleep later now because I don't have to commute in the morning and I don't have to get the kids on the bus, so.
I was telling my husband, people are going to get used to this, you know?
I think the other thing is teenagers getting used to sleeping in every day.
Yeah.
Very much.
They're going to have to move the start of school till about 11 o'clock.
No, this year is 8:30. They flipped it.
Well, the funny thing is, my daughter's in sixth grade and this morning she came in, "Dad, you didn't wake me up at like 8:45." And she's like, "I got a call in 15 minutes."
They're having a moving up ceremony for them too, right, to middle school?
They are. I just got the details the other day for the kids going from fifth to sixth. Because I have one in that grade too. I have one going to sixth and one going to seventh. So they're going to do an end-of-year Pine Hill. They're going to do it on Zoom, and then they're also going to have like a parade where we all stay in our cars to go up by the school one last time, and they're going to have signs for them and all that kind of thing.
Yeah, yeah. The high school one's pretty cool. The high school one, they're renting a Jumbotron.
I have a senior who's going to be part of that. That's going to be quite a scene.
Because I talked with Andy Keough and Jill Thador, the school nurse, a lot.
Oh, do you?
Yeah. Three times a week.
It's pretty wild. They're going to walk across the stage. The parents are going to be able to get out of the car and snap photos. They're going to have a Jumbotron, I guess.
Yes. So the people queued up in their cars can see the kids ahead of them walking on the stage.
Nice.
Yeah, no, I think they did a good job. I mean, the kids at Pine Hill, my daughter was upset at first because she's like, but at least they're doing something.
Yeah, a little bit of closure, right?
Yeah, exactly. So now I've got everybody on here. In our executive session, the board voted to authorize the town administrator along with Frank Jenkins from, I think that's what we decided, right, Frank Jenkins from Land Acquisition, to start negotiations with the seller and explore the use of a senior center and what the costs would be for the building.
And explored the suitability of the building for a combined senior center municipal town building.
We have one caveat to make sure Frank, we haven't told Frank Jenkins. Just a minor detail.
Oh my God. So tell me what Frank Jenkins' official position is in this.
He's the Chair of the Land Acquisition Committee.
Okay, land acquisition.
And who is the other person?
David Williams.
Oh, David Williams. Okay, terrific. And David's here, right? David, at least, can you make Saturday, David? Can you come to the building?
I'm planning on stopping by.
Oh, good.
Other people on the board are.
Is David here?
George, you're going to stop by?
Yes, I'm going to go to the building on Saturday morning.
I am too. We're going to have to make sure the three of us aren't there at the same time.
Oh, good. And so David and hopefully Frank can go and look during that window too.
Yeah.
It'll be great.
David, if you could reach out to Frank tomorrow and talk to him about it, that'd be great.
Yep.
What time do you think the guys are going? I may stop by, but not if I'm going to obviously overlap any quorum stuff.
I think that she's only inviting a few people in the building. If two of us are in the building, the other person can just wait for one of us to leave.
Sure, absolutely.
We just want to thank you all very much.
I'm so thrilled.
Very excited to get this going. It means a lot to a lot of people, so thank you.
We're just starting.
Yeah.
I just can't tell you, you know, you all, you're the leadership, leaders of the town. To have this happen, you're the first stop on our journey, and thank you so much. George, would you send me an email putting that proposal in writing so that I can?
I think David, somebody must have the motion written down. If somebody could share that with Chris, I don't have it written down, so David, if you could share that with Chris, that would be great.
Yeah, I'm trying to do it right now.
Okay, great.
Okay, thank you so much.
And I think, I mean, the main thing is here, as we said, we're, the numbers are concerned about the costs, so we really want to explore if this is the right alternative. I know, I understand the need for senior center, but is this the right building? We want to talk with the library. We want to explore any option that we can just to see if, I mean, I really want to make sure we're not just buying this because it's available, but it's really truly the right option for the town.
We appreciate that. We appreciate that. Right. And just, George, at some point, we could even talk with you in more detail just kind of what this journey has been. That property that Sean Colleen referenced, that was something that we had been considering. There was space in the community center. There's a lengthy history of very in-depth kind of attempts at trying to get a center going. I'm happy to share them with you. This did not come just up and we thought, oh, this will be something fun to explore. It was not a casual thing.
No, I understand.
Timing is hard, but we have been looking at this very hard for many years, so thank you. We appreciate you guys considering.
All right, well, that was our last item, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, second from Paul. I saw his hand up, so roll call vote, Mr. Drenses.
Vote aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Waldron.
Aye.
Mr. Yan. And I vote aye. Thank you very much. Thanks for coming back.
Yep, thanks a lot.
We'll talk to you soon.
Thank you, Barbara.
Bye, thank you. Bye.
All right. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Congratulations.
Yes.
Paul and Chuck and David and everybody, George, we can't thank you enough. Have a great evening.
Night, Chris.
Good night. Take care.
Hey, Paul, before you go, I have, can I read you this statement?
Okay.
I'll go.
I put, "The Select Board returned open session and informed the Council on Aging that they voted to authorize David Williams, Town Administrator, and Frank Jenkins, Chair of the Land Acquisition Committee, to represent the town in conducting due diligence in exploring and negotiating a purchase of Five Washington Street for the use of the property as a senior center."
I think it was a little stronger than just authorize due diligence. Can you just reverse the order of that?
To represent, I mean, we could take out the due diligence thing because didn't anyone say the due diligence was part of negotiating?
Yes, but I think the idea is just, I don't have the words in front of me, but authorize negotiations and due diligence rather than say to authorize due diligence.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
It has to say something in there about further analysis of the additional costs associated with this. That was part of the motion.
Yeah, that's fine. I just want to start it off with the authorization to initiate negotiations.
Aren't we just repeating what the COA has already done?
Because we haven't done the analysis yet. They haven't done that yet.
Well, that's.
Right. They haven't done it.
All right. Do you have the motion written down?
Well, I actually emailed Barbara Carboni because, you know, at this time of the night, I said to authorize David and Frank Jenkins to explore with the seller the suitability of Five Washington Street to be used at a senior center and to further analyze any additional costs associated with that purchase. That's what I had.
That sounds good. I think they have the word negotiate in there, but that's fine.
Yeah, negotiates in there somewhere. The recording won't be done till later. And then Zoom will email me when the recording's ready.
Our senior programs are well attended, but out of necessity, these programs are housed in many different locations throughout the town. We have made do because historically we have lacked a dedicated building and the funds to bring this goal to fruition. About 12 years ago, a Sherburne resident, Peggy Secudo, believed that Sherburne should have a senior center to serve its growing aging population. With this in mind, Peggy spearheaded the fundraising arm of the COA, Friends of the Sherburne COA, for the purpose of supporting this goal. There is now an available property for sale on the footprint of the Sherburne Town Campus within walking distance of both the Woodhaven Senior Housing and the Abbey Road condos, as well as the library, the community center, town hall, and the two churches in town, as well as our downtown area. Friends of the COA have been raising funds, and other funds are potentially available from the state to aid in the purchase of a senior center. The property could serve to adequately house our COA staff offices and afford Sherburne's aging adult population their long-awaited senior center. This building provides space for activities such as training our volunteers, class classes, lifetime learning classes, provide a resource materials area, book group gatherings, morning coffees and evening lectures, knitting and other craft groups. It is a place for people to stop in for information on the latest Council on Aging travel or purchase transportation tickets for a doctor's visit into Boston. It offers a private space for confidential conferences with medical specialists and other counselors such as Shine Consultants. The Shine Consultant comes in to the COA office on a regular basis. This building is centrally located. It would have prominent signage. It would also give the Council on Aging a face in our community so that passersby would be aware that we in Sherburne respect, serve, and welcome our aging population. This is a private real estate transaction. And I cannot stress enough, the time is of the essence.
Thank you, Chris. Sue Calhoun, I think you also wanted to say something, is that?
I have some information to share as well. And first, again, I echo Chris and thank you for the opportunity to present to you about the COA. As you may or may not know, the COA provides advocacy and support systems for residents 60 and over. And we help maintain and improve their independence and quality of life. We help to assist the needs of the elderly, develop services and programs to help meet those needs. In 2019, according to the town census lists, there were over 1,075 individuals that are 60 and over, which is comprised 25% of the population. The projected population for 2030 is 1,451, which would represent 35% of the community. Sherborne developers are now targeting new home developments for those 55 and over, which would also increase the population of this age group. Some of the trends in aging today are that aging in place is becoming the trend. People don't want to leave their town, especially the seniors of Sherborne. They want to remain here. It's where their networks and their friends are, all of their connections. It's where they raise their families. According to a recent study by Nielsen, an older economy is emerging, indicating people over 50 will soon account for 70% of disposable income. The town would want to keep residents 60 and over in their community. They offer value. They are active contributors to town and its many organizations. They can offer time, leadership, and experience and institutional knowledge, and they also want to be engaged and productive in the town. Every age group brings a value to the community, and we need to value everyone and recognize what each community group, age group, brings to them. I don't know if any of you have been to the COA office, but it's about 420 square feet. The file cabinets take up 56 square feet, leaving us about 364 square feet of usable space. There is an adjacent conference room that's nine by eight, and it's shared with the Cemetery Commission and several file cabinets. So it's very limited and cumbersome, and especially hard for seniors that have any kind of handicap. We don't have any storage space. We house medical equipment at the Pilgrim Church. We're in the lower level of the town hall. It's not handicapped, accessible, the back end of town hall. Not to mention, people can't even find us. There's lack of privacy for residents when discussing personal and financial health issues. With the current situation, the staff would not be able to work safely in this office, or more importantly, we wouldn't be able to support the seniors that come and drop in. Over 70% of what we do requires physical interaction with this population. Those 60 and over would be impacted by the guidelines as they currently stand if there's no common area for them to gather. That would increase the social isolation, which continues to be a problem for this age group. Some other issues to consider for this property is that residents 60 and over often go to the senior, what I call the senior center circuit. So they go to other senior centers. They go to Wellesley, they go to Natick, they go to Dover. We readily share among senior centers our programs. However, with the new guidelines and the anticipated openings that reduce capacity, the seniors, our seniors, aren't going to be able to even attend those activities because naturally the senior centers will take their residents first. So that's going to limit their, give them social exclusivity. The worst-case scenario is that our seniors will move out of town to a place where there are activities for them and ways for them to engage, taking their resources, their time, their experience, and their money. This building is within the footprint of the town campus and accessible. It would be enough space to meet the needs of the COA. We would have enough space to follow current guidelines of social distancing, but yet be a refuge to those who want to participate or just come and have a cup of coffee. We envision the space to be flexible and modular in design with having movable tables, workstations, and seating areas. It could accommodate intimate support groups or host a mid-sized class lecture or workshop. We can offer private space for consultation and personal discussions. The size of the building would be suitable for the population we serve. This is a unique and unexpected opportunity. We didn't expect it. It came about. We saw the sign. It would be a shame to have this building go into other hands. This building would help answer immediate and future needs for those 60 and over. We couldn't build a new center for the price of this building. The minimum cost for a new center would be well over $1 million, and that would be a low estimate. And considering the construction of the library, it would probably not be voted in anytime soon. So through the Friends, we can bring $200,000, which could contribute funding to the purchase of the building. We also have an availability earmark of $100,000 that we would have to apply for an extension. And we would also pursue different avenues to help raise additional funds through the private and public partnerships. Your support is very much appreciated. It's our hope that you approve this request and provide us with direction to move forward. We know that you have accommodated our request to even come present, and we really appreciate it. And we hope that you make the right decision and a wise decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Chuck, I know, I see your hand. Just one second. Was there anybody else? Chris, I know you had wanted to speak, and I got Sue to speak, so is it okay for us to start a discussion with the Select Board now?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, great. Chuck, go ahead. Why don't you go ahead and ask your question?
I think this is a great opportunity. The cost of a full-service center is going to be a lot more. I had a couple of questions for Sue and also for Mary Ann Clancy. Mary Ann, I'm happy to see that you're on the call. First of all, is there any covered parking at the building? I don't think there is.
Is there covered parking? No.
David, could you unmute Mary Ann so we can hear her?
Do it.
Okay. Hi, Mary Ann.
Hi. No, there isn't any covered parking there. But there is a lot of parking.
Yeah, there's a lot of exterior parking, but listing on Zillow, it looks like it's about just under 2,600 square feet.
Correct.
With the purchase price, the estimate on it was like 610, with the purchase price of 600, that's 235 a square foot. Is that market rate? I mean, I think it actually is more value to the town because of its proximity to the campus. And we have the problems that a lot of colleges in Boston have of being landlocked. But is 235, in your expert opinion as a realtor, a reasonable market rate for this building?
Well, I believe it is. I don't do a lot of commercial, so it's not as easy an answer I can give you as I could if it were a residential property. But I can tell you this, there is, 599,000 is nothing for an office building. To give you an example, the current owner paid 700,000 for this building. He has, he did that out of the kindness of his heart because he was trying to help someone out. And now he is anxious to move on. When we first talked about putting it back on, we had it at, we were going to put it on at In the Mid Sixes. And he said, "Let's just sell it." So I do believe 599 is a low enough price that an end user, let's say it's not the town of Sherburne, let's say it's someone that wants to open up a bookshop or a gift shop. And I know those are not, you know, that popular now. But it offer retail space. It also has space for other offices. The layout is such that you could have one, two, three accesses into this building, three different locations. So I think you could easily rent out to three people if you were renting it. I know you're looking at it in a different situation. It's got great signage on two sides, Route 16, Route 27. It's got a lot of parking. It has a newer septic. It would not be suitable for a full-fledged restaurant. But there are many other, it was a doctor's office at one time. It has a brand-new roof. It has vinyl siding. So I guess the bottom line here is 599, if someone does the figures in terms of renting out some space, using some space, that's how I had envisioned it. Someone using part of the space for a business and then renting out the other spaces to cover the cost of the mortgage. And I think that would be easily done. And the other thing I will point out with this, want to see it, I am going to do an open house on Saturday from 10 to 12. So welcome to come. We are using masks and gloves and having people come in. Not everybody at the same time, but I am going to be there then. It does accommodate. It's a nice office space.
All right, thank you, Mary Ann. I just want to make a couple of quick comments. I just want to, I know we've talked about, you know, the library is being built. It's taken a lot of time and we've, but from my understanding, the lower level of library has a huge amount of space that was, I thought, intended to be used by the Council on the Aging. Paul has mentioned many times in meetings lately of adding additional tax burden to our town right now. I'm really concerned about the idea of purchasing a building. I know the Friends of the COA have money to put towards it, but it would still cost the town considerable amount of money. And I'm sure there's a lot of improvements that need to be made to make the building ADA compliant. And the last item I'm concerned about is taking another property off the tax rules and making it a municipal property. Because right now, we have 10,000 of tax, at least 10,000 of tax revenue on this property every year. So those are my initial concerns that I just wanted to bring up. Paul, I see your hand raised, so go ahead.
Oh, I'd like to say a few things. First, I think we owe it to the seniors. We've been talking about a senior center in town 10 years, 15 years. And during that period of time, I have indicated publicly many times that I support the idea of a senior center. And I support the senior center because it literally, that word center, it works as a center for our seniors. It works to center them. It works to focus. It works to give them a home away from home. And I know over the last decade or more, this has been a consistently popular idea with our seniors. I also know from the different towns that I work for, pretty much everybody has a senior center. The towns that I work for have a senior center. I believe. I believe many of the communities around Sherburne have senior centers. We don't. And during the time that I've been a selectman, the amount of seniors in town has grown. And I believe I saw a figure that somewhere around twenty-five percent of the town right now are seniors. And that by twenty-thirty, it's going to be thirty-five percent. Or the third of the town is going to be senior.
Or more.
And seniors don't have kids in the schools, which is the, the high-cost part of our tax bills. Two-thirds of our tax bills go to our schools. The seniors support the school system, but they don't have kids in the school system. So they're, they're a financial asset to the community. Every, every senior that we keep in town in a single-family home is contributing financially to the community. Whereas they move out and a family comes in with two, three, four kids, that ends up being a much more costly proposition for the town. I will say like ten years ago or so, I worked on getting a mark in a bond bill for a hundred thousand dollars for this project. I believe it can be called upon and be made, be used for this project. It's a hundred thousand of state money. And my philosophy has always been if the state's willing to give you some money, take it. Make use of it. Don't turn it down. Don't turn your back on it. And again, the Friends organization, I know a lot about the Friends because my wife is active in the Friends. They have done a lot of fundraising over a long period of time. They're optimistic about continuing to fundraise in the future. I saw an estimate that if we borrowed some money over twenty years and we had, we use the state funds and we use the money that the Friends have, have put together now, which is two hundred thousand. We're talking for the average taxpayer, something like fourteen or fifteen dollars a year to support this going forward for the next twenty years. Because again, we can buy money, we can spread it out over twenty years and fund it over that long period of time, rather than having to pay for it all at once upfront. So I think that there are ways that we can address this issue. I would also mention that we don't have to pay the offering price. We can go in and try and negotiate that. Uh, of course, the seller will have some say in that, but we don't necessarily have to pay the full asking price either. So for all these reasons, I think, well, let's do something for the seniors. At least let's, let's go forward to the point of letting it be considered by the voters a town meeting so that the voters can decide whether they want to do something for seniors or not. Or to put it in other words, let's not today build this.
Thank you, Paul. Eric, I saw your hand up, go ahead.
Yep, just like a couple of quick ones. First logistics, even if this is done under private contributions and private funds, does this require two-thirds vote of a proper, of a town meeting to actually authorize a municipal purchase of property? Okay, so we need a town meeting vote actually. My second question is, um, given that it is an elderly population, is this, is this property currently ADA compliant?
We're getting a quote.
That, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Sue.
We're getting a quote to make the lower level where all the COA activities would be. So we've contacted somebody, the bathroom would need to be refitted to make it wheelchair accessible. And some of the doorways would need to be expanded. Um, and the other thing is, I just wanted to answer the question about the library space. As I understand it, it can't be a designated, a dedicated space to the COA, but we could use it. And, um, I know everybody's anxious for the library to open to use their space. And we would be in the same boat as we're in now, trying to find space around town to hold programs.
One, one other thing I just want to mention, you guys mentioned being in the lower level with the offices. I know right now at Town Hall, there's a big shift, um, being done where the planning offices and, and the people are being moved down to the lower level, which is going to open up a lot of space up on the second floor, which is much brighter, bigger for, I know from what I've been told, potentially for the COA to have a better office in Town Hall. And then by having the office upstairs and the large space on the lower level of the new library, I felt like that was probably going to be more adequate and not burden the town and taxpayers with another building, taking another building off the tax rules. That's, that's my biggest concern right now. Talked about lowering our expenses, but now we're talking about buying a building.
George, may I ask you a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so now you're saying that, um, as I understand it, we're going to get out of the basement and where would our, where would our offices be upstairs?
I think we're right now, from what I understand, this is what the discussion is, that where the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission are now?
Oh, the third floor.
Yeah, upstairs, yeah.
But that's not, but, but George, what we're trying to create is a senior center, a gathering place.
No, no, I'm not saying that for the seniors there, I'm talking about for your offices. The senior center, from what I understand, is the lower, going to be in the lower level of the new library, which is ADA compliant.
True.
To the parking lot, that's.
I'm sorry to correct you, but it got dwindled down to one room that was not dedicated to the seniors. That was, that was a room that people could, um, you know, uh, you'd have to buy appointment, put your, your name in and see. Areas in town that wanted to use that room. It was not a dedicated room and it wasn't the whole floor, it was one room.
Well, I thought it was, I thought it was, my under, sorry, I'm sorry. I thought that my understanding was that lower level, the large space was going to be available for your, for your events when you, when you needed it.
Well, no, it, it turned out it was one room and, and we would not be, the Friends money would not be available for that.
Okay, no, yeah, okay.
That's, that's a shared community space. And of course, COA would be aligned to do some lifetime learning or, like we're doing all over town in all of these different spaces. But it's not a dedicated space. And many of us have been involved in looking for a dedicated space, as Paul said very well, for over a decade now. And researching exhaustively, different area, town, area, town senior centers. And to see what we could support here. We have an opportunity that is, it's, you know, coming up at an awkward time, but, um, we have put exhaustive research in trying to find a good fit for our town. And it, a twenty-five percent population, you know, this is, this is something we really can't ignore for much longer. And I appreciate you wanting not, to wanting, to not burden the town with another piece of real estate. But, um, my, my feeling is you need a place for seniors to come in for services, to learn about resources. And we're not going to, there's not many properties near the center of town that are accessible to them. And they are a, a huge contributor to our tax base here. If we can have them stay in town and feel that this is a place that they want to continue to be. And I think a senior center provides some of that.
Okay, thank you, Tricia. Suzy, I see your hand up, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. You got tired of looking at the tree? Yeah, I finally gave up who I am. One, I have questions. I bring up my Traffic Safety Committee on this. The parking that we talk about for that, um, that parcel there at Five Washington is not equal to what we currently have between the library and the Town Hall. And we all have seen the frustration of trying to find a parking when lifetime learning or anything is going on in Town Hall. So is the parking actually going to be sufficient there? Or are people still going to park at the Town Hall and have to walk all, all the way over to Five Washington? So there's that. The building now is not ADA compliant to what, what is necessary. The second floor, will that be, become ADA compliant? And how is that used? Right now, you're, you're stating we have twenty-five percent of the community is over sixty. I'm one of them. And so that building right now will fit the needs, but you're stating in just a, just in a short decade, we're going to be thirty percent. So is that building going to be able to accommodate thirty percent of the seniors? Now, uh, and then one other thing is we've all seen it. If you are at the split and you're heading towards the sick, go from downtown, you take the left at the split on twenty-seven, that retaining wall there is constantly falling down. And that's a huge expense. So, um, that needs to be addressed because if we're, if we're purchasing that, we're fixing it. Right now, you got granite blocks falling down onto the sidewalk. So the parking, the issue, is it really a good long-term purchase for the town? Anyways, my thoughts, back to the tree.
Eric, go ahead.
Yes, it's, it's round out the third question I had actually, which does taper well into Sue's question there. Is that, you know, they're getting a call for the ADA compliance. If a contractor is going in there or maybe a certified home inspector or building inspector, it'd be nice to get an opinion of what kind of maintenance of future costs, the condition of the building is. I mean, in concept, there's no question, I support a senior center and I like the concept of something being done in what we call in the campus center and this kind of triangle between the two roots and, um, whatever, Sanger Street. But it's, um, there's still enough unknowns. I think it's going to be tough to get a complete blanket support. That's what I guess. I think you might get a support in concept. And I know we have to rush this, but it'd be nice to see, you know, the ADA compliance cost. Just I've seen some big numbers of those in my day job and just, and, and, uh, an opinion of the condition of the building and future maintenance cost.
Yeah, and we could get that. I mean, like we said, this opportunity came up quickly. And we definitely can, will do our due diligence and we can all get that price, those prices to you as well.
And the, and the, and the seller's willing to wait until like, because obviously we'll have to do a special town meeting and we don't even know how we're going to do a town meeting itself under COVID, you know what I mean? There are a lot of, there are certain logistics.
Back to Mary Ann.
Yeah, Mary Ann, what it, what, can you give us an update on that?
Well, I, you know, by the way, I wanted to just say, because Chuck asked me a very simple question. I gave you a long-winded answer because I was trying to explain that the value at, at the five ninety-nine price is far lower than it's ever been in the past. So, um, I think it is a good opportunity, uh, for, for someone to buy it. So I do think that there is a need to, to move a little more quickly. I would also like to say that I do not believe that this town will ever build a senior center after the library. I hate to say it, but I don't think that the town is going to be real excited about starting a building project on anything. I don't think you'll ever find anything that will be five hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars or less as this is. It's in a great location. Obviously, you're going to want to do, um, you know, evaluation and testing, et cetera, on it. But I do think it's actually a long-term solution. I don't think it is a short-term solution. A long-term solution would be a gigantic center. And I don't think the town has an appetite for that now or anywhere in the near or long future. I also think because of the price, if you ever felt that it was too much, you could always turn around and sell it. Um, I think it's a good price now, you're not paying the higher prices. And, um, so I think that, I think you'd be making a mistake not to do it. Your question about will he wait? I, you know, I, obviously he wants to sell it as soon as possible. I think I said to the group when they first came, um, I would like to sell this before I die and I'm not young. So, um, going to the town meeting is, you know, I mean, I think we do need to step on it. He's a very nice man, but he is a businessman. He wants to sell it. And if we get an offer before then, um, then obviously he's going to want to consider that. But I think if we have to give him some parameters of, of timeframe, if we say, oh, we don't know, we're not having a town meeting for six months, that could be a problem, but.
Well, I think the schedule as of now, Mary Ann, just so you know, is that we'll have a meeting. If this goes to town meeting, it would be in like August, September timeframe from what I understand.
I mean, it's, it's a problem if someone else wants to buy it. I mean, I have a responsibility to the seller. He's already helped one woman out when he bought it the last time and paid more than he wanted. I'm not sure, you know, I mean, he's a nice guy, but, um, you know, it's.
Just a second, Tricia, I wanted to, a few of the board members have been wanting to say a couple of things. Chuck, go ahead.
Yeah, two or three things. One, Paul, you and I may have to recuse ourselves because of our advanced age and having an interest in this. And until Libby's the lover on the board, I may actually have to recuse myself. I think this is a great idea. I share Mary Ann's view that the idea of us building a, uh, a, a, a large senior center isn't likely. And for relatively short money, I think it gives us access to property near the campus. Um, I had a question, if the town is putting up two hundred and fifty or three hundred thousand to buy it, my assumption is that some of this office space can be used for recreation or affordable housing or, or veterans. They're, they're, according to the Zillow listing, there are eight offices, six on the first floor, which will be ADA compliant and two that are not. So I wanted to ask the COA people that if the town's putting up close to half the purchase price, I'm assuming you're comfortable with other town departments having offices there.
Yeah, we have to look at what the constraints are and what the Friends have raised. And also what that hundred thousand dollars that the state may be contributing. We just, we just have to look to see what the constraints may be. But I, I wouldn't use that as a stumble block here.
I think what we, my feeling is that we have to use this as a COA senior center. And that's what the COA, I mean, the, I'm sorry, the Friends have raised the money for, not to make it, um, all those other things you said, Chuck, I'm sorry, but that's the constraints I think we have to live with.
The problem is the town is putting up money and, uh, you know, COA is very important. And seniors like Paul and I are very important to the town, but.
Oh, absolutely. So come over.
There are a lot of other folks that are down in that basement in the space that we've been talking about sharing, either the library basement. I think this is a much, much more desirable project if particularly those second-floor offices are used for other town departments. I just, I think that's a very important selling point.
Paul, go ahead.
George, I just wanted to answer the question about how, how to proceed. What the Council on Aging needs is authorization to make an offer on the property, negotiate a price. It's to sign a purchase and sale agreement now that would have a condition that is subject to town meeting approval. That would set the price and that would take it off the market. The town meeting is ninety days from here, from, from where we are right now date-wise. So the, it's not uncommon in a real estate transaction, have a closing ninety days after the purchase and sale agreement is signed. That takes it off the market. That fixes the price, so we go to town meeting, we know what the price is. We present it to the voters. All these questions that are being asked are questions that will be debated at town meeting. And if the voters say no, the voters say no. If the voters say yes, then we go forward and we do a closing and we own it.
Paul, I have one question for you on the logistics. Just if we were to, if it was to get voted at town meeting, wouldn't it also, if we're borrowing the money, we'd have to, it'd have to be on a ballot as well? Correct?
Yeah, it would be a dead exclusion, yes.
Yep.
That's why it's going to take a two-thirds vote and then.
And also an election. And I know we haven't even figured out when in the fall. Jackie, if Jackie could be unmuted, I want to get her thoughts on this. Like, I just want to get everybody's realistic view as to the timeframe and that it's not. If we have a town meeting in ninety days, then we have to have an election after that. So go ahead, Jackie.
Okay, so right now we've got the town meeting, um, scheduled for August twenty-fifth, but I believe that you guys wanted to, it wasn't just going to be a budgetary town meeting. You guys were going to have other warrant articles like cut two and a half. So we would have to have a special town election anyway to vote all of those questions. So also you guys would have to open the warrant again to add that on it, correct?
And we've never actually finalized the. And we've never actually finalized the warrant. We never finally, we never voted on a final warrant.
Right, but you would close, I thought, for submission. So that's what I'm saying.
We'd have to reopen it if we wanted to add a warrant.
Yeah, but we're going to have to have a special town election anyway. If you guys want to go forward with all the capital expenditures on August 25th.
Right, right. Jeff, I saw your hand. Go ahead.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, I'm very supportive of this proposal. I think it's a great opportunity for COA and I actually agree that it should be dedicated to the COA only. I would suggest, and probably this is obvious, to have advisory do a full financial analysis. George, you brought up a good point about the loss of tax revenue. But this is also going to be a capital cost, but it's also now a town building. So it's going to have to have an operating budget to cover maintenance and utilities and, you know, ongoing operating costs for it. And it will have a capital budget for future capital needs also. So I would like to strongly recommend that we ask advisory to, I mean, it sounds like Sue's gathered a lot of data. But ask advisory to do an analysis of the capital and operating costs to the town.
That's a great idea, Jeff. I think, I think, you know, if we're going to consider putting this on a warrant, we need advisory has got to do a full analysis of it and capital budget as well.
If I can speak up, because that goes to my previous thing where I asked for not only ADA cost, but I'd like an opinion from the contractor on future.
Actually, I think Sean Colleen's on here. Could you unmute Sean? I think as the buildings, the person in charge of buildings and maintenance, I would think, I would want Sean involved on getting the quote on that and figuring out what would be needed.
He's unmuted. He's not muted.
Sean?
He's hiding. While we're waiting, I guess I would say it would, you know, typically capital budget and advisory would get involved because this is a capital cost. But just for perspective, and it's, I think, obvious, but you know, any one of our fire engines have been around 900, 800, $900,000. So.
No. I just want to go through and say it needs XYZ right now. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, no, I think we need to know, like, yes, the cost of the building is 599, but what's the cost to actually have it be the senior center? We want to know what the total cost would be. Absolutely.
George, can I add a point here?
Yeah, go ahead.
I made the point before, but I want to make it again. Every senior that stays in town and stays in their single family house saves us a lot of money. If they move out of town and people come in with kids who are going to go to the schools and we have all the school costs and there's a certain large number of the cost to educate per kid, we actually lose money on that. So when you're doing your calculations about what this costs by taking this off the tax rolls and so on and so on, I'm suggesting to you, there's a very large calculation and a very large number that is to the credit of this project, which is keeping seniors invested in Sherburne and therefore keeping down the school costs.
Excellent point.
Just.
I have a question.
Just Eric, Chuck, then Jackie.
Okay, it's just back to logistics and I have a statement on it. So we talked about the process of going to town meeting, whether we reopen the warrant or whatever else it is. I'm assuming it ultimately be a selectman sponsored article that's a selectman will actually have to see it again to vote to actually recommend this article at town meeting.
Yes. Yeah, that's what, I mean, we would have to put it on the warrant.
So we would actually have to vote to support it. So what I suspect.
We vote to actually first, Eric, we vote to put it on the warrant. Whether we support it or not, we, we first put it on the warrant and then we can vote whether to support it or not.
Because where I'm going with this is I think there's going to be quite a bit of discussion and there's some unknowns that, you know, we actually may be right now supported enough to do a purchase, sale, negotiate a price. But I'm going to want to see, and I think, you know, it could be part of even our approval of this, our vote now could be to actually wait, we get the ADA and the, um, the upgrade costs prior to our review and prior to our vote to put it on the town meeting.
All right. Chuck, go ahead. Tricia, I see you. I'll get to you in a second.
Eric, Eric actually made exactly the suggestion that I wanted to make, which is I am concerned about. I think this is a good opportunity for the town and I think we need to be prepared to move. There's clearly some inspections and additional work that needs to be done. But I, I think this is an opportunity that we should not lose and we should, we should move on. In terms of the earlier point about the shared space, if COA is putting up 200,000, the state's putting up 100,000 and the town's putting up 300,000, I think that the COA donation clearly can qualify for the dedicated COA offices. I, I am concerned that this be a town building with, 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 with shared space. So I think it's really important to figure that out, figure out whether or not the COA money can be used for that where some of the space is being used. The floor layout that I was in the memo that Sue and Chris sent along was very helpful. It looks like about two-thirds of the space is on the first floor, which is probably going to be dedicated primarily to COA. And only a third is on the second floor. So I, Jeff, I respectfully disagree. I, this is a pretty big building for it to be dedicated solely to COA. And while I fully support it, I also want us to be able to have the flexibility to put some of the other folks that are in the basement and the town hall up on that second floor.
Jackie?
Yeah, I actually have a question as, as a resident, not, not the town clerk. So I'm just wondering, I must have missed something, but I don't remember seeing anything like a, a real push for donations specifically for fundraising for a building. Did I miss something? Because if, if that, if that isn't the case, could you guys do another push? You could, I mean, there could be a lot of residents in town that would donate more money for the purchase of the building.
Libby, go ahead.
Thank you, George. At the spring 2019 COA board meeting, the officers of the CO, friends of the COA came forward and said they were reluctant to continue fundraising, their annual fundraising, which has been focused on money for a senior center, if there were no plans, no, no sign of a senior center. And so I, I think that the lack of fundraising toward the senior center is because there was nothing other than an idea to raise money for. And going, and, and there also, there are some, the fundraising this year by the friends has changed. They did not have their holiday bazaar, which was the, the annual letter to the town. And the holiday bazaar were the two major fundraisers that the friends did. And for other reasons, they couldn't do the holiday bazaar. But I think if there were an actual proposal, a plan for a senior center, that we would be able to ramp up private fundraising very quickly with the help of the friends. And that I just also like to mention, I mean, Pat Cassell did a fantastic job of raising money for the overlook at Farm Pond. And so I think fund, private fundraising is available for a well-defined, well-thought-out and a project that's considered necessary and valuable to the town. Thank you.
Thanks, Libby. Tricia, I know you've been waiting to speak. Go ahead.
Well, a lot of the points I was going to make have been brought up. But I, I guess I would just urge that we act on this. And I, I'm learning, I guess, through all of you, what that process involves. And I wouldn't want our requirement to go to advisory or the capital, I guess, capital budget to hold up an opportunity here. I do think that the, the value is below, my understanding is this is being priced at a pretty good number. And I don't think we want to let too much time pass. So I would urge that anybody streamline it if everyone. If it's contingent on getting those approvals or those numbers, then I would ask that the selectmen really help us streamline. But we don't have to. I would, you know, I would ask that the selectmen authorize us to directly enter into negotiations if soon as possible.
Okay, thank you, Tricia. Sean, I see you're on here now. Can you jump in? I had asked you a question before. Go ahead.
Am I unmuted?
Yeah, you're unmuted. Go ahead.
So a lot of things have been discussed and gone by what I was probably going to comment, but I would caution everyone to remind them that this is an old Victorian. It's in the historical district. It's, so it's restricted on the exterior on what we can or should do with it. And full disclosure, my brother spent the better part of five or six years working there because he worked for Burke when he owned it. My father did a lot of work on that building. I knew the building pretty well. It's an antique. It's, it's going to be transformed into a public building. Call it whatever you want. It's going to be the municipal building. It's going to fall under different rules. It's going to have to be completely ADA compliant. It's probably going to become a public water supply, which may be an issue. I don't know. They've upgraded the septic. I don't know what they've done with their, their, their well. The campus in that area don't have the greatest of water. There's some pretty high costs that I, I'd like to see some due diligence before we get to the point where we're going too far towards it. And I, I have to remind everyone that the DPW director and several others were told to pull their capital back for a town meeting in August because the town, the taxpayers were not going to be asked to come out. And so, you know, we've taken a, a pretty big stand on not, not increasing the tax levy. And as a resident, as, as, you know, under my capacity, it's shocking that we would be pushing this in August in the middle of the COVID crisis to try to purchase a piece of property. And lastly, I'll remind everyone what the last piece of property we bought was. We bought a hint, an antique next to town hall that we, we just had to get. And right now it's a pile of stone and gravel as the lay down yard for the library. So I'm pretty concerned with, with the, the costs we're going to be borne.
Thank you, Sean. Mary Ann?
Yeah, I do want to address that and both things. First of all, there is no way I'm going to convince a seller to sell a piece of property unless you do do your complete due diligence. No one's going to take their property off the market and then, you know, the town votes for it and then you decide whether you want to buy it. So all the due diligence, you need to provide funding so that water testing, we'll do the Title V, obviously, but all the things that you're concerned about it. I'm sure, Sean, if your dad worked on it, he did a good job and it's nice and sound. But that remains to be seen. I guess we'll have to find that out when you, when you do that. I'll also point out the big difference, and I'm glad Sean brought up the one about the one next to the, that, that antique next to the town hall. I was very much opposed to that. And one of the reasons I was opposed to it is no due diligence was done before that was purchased. No one cared about the septic. No one cared about anything. That was an antique house. It was not set up the same way this property is set up. That had, that was a house. This is an office building. And so a lot of the things that that did not have, this does have it. It does have a lot of open space that that didn't. It's not a house. It's been converted into office space. So, and, and all the buildings in town are old. I mean, old doesn't mean it's going to fall apart. I, I think you have to do all your due diligence. You have to give, allow the funding to, to do that. Because any, any purchase and sale, if we got to that point, subject or any offer subject to it passing down meeting has to also have no contingencies. So you're going to need some time to do that. And, and, and I think also I will just leave it with, you know, as a resident of the town, if you do not pursue this or get this, you will not have a, a, a senior center. I mean, it's as simple as that. It sounds kind of melodramatic, but it's the truth. No one is going to build a senior center.
All right, do we have to take any action now? I know we have a executive session to talk about this, but Paul, go ahead. Can you kind of?
Yeah, the, the next step would be to see if we can figure out what the actual price of the property is going to be. And that involves making an offer, like anytime you're buying a house, people can list the house for any value they want, whether it's a low price or a high price. But the test comes when you make an offer. So the hopeful result of today and the executive session later is for this board to decide, does it make sense to make an offer on this, this building and this real estate parcel? To see if we can lock it up at a price, a fixed price. So we know what the amount is. We know what we have to fundraise for. We know what number to present to advisory, to capital budget and everybody else. Because right now, we really don't know that. There could be a buyer that will step forward tomorrow and buy the property. And we don't want to get into a bidding war with somebody who, who will offer more than offering to get rid of us. So first.
Hard to make an offer when your offer is going to be public. Keep that in mind.
That's why we're going to go into executive session.
Really? But I mean, you're going to have to present that offer number at town meeting.
Right, after, I think we would have to be already down the road at a PNS before it would go to a town.
Right, and that's, yes, I agree.
I think we're going to discuss in, in our executive session, what we're willing to negotiate. I think that's, that's kind of where we're at, at this point.
My only concern, George, is I, I'm not willing to do anything until I have an advisory analysis.
Yeah.
So I disagree with Paul. I feel that we, the, the offer that we could consider making would be subject to the advisory analysis on what the costs associated to this are. So I'm not willing to do anything without a thorough analysis.
Jeff, I, I agree with you. I want to know the total cost, not just the cost of the purchase. But Chris, go ahead. Do you have something?
Um, I, I, I don't want to run all around Robin Hood's barn with this. We, we, it, it all is depending on a contingency of any kind that we would like to put on the, on the offer. I, may I ask you, five selectmen, leaders of our town, to possibly make a motion that sounds something like this? To approve of the town entering into negotiations to purchase Five Washington Street to serve as a senior center for the town of Sherburne. It doesn't give any, any, anything else like that. And you can make any kind of contingency plan you'd like. But it gives us, you're, you guys are the first step in this. Cannot go to the zoning board or the advisory or anybody without the blessing of the town leadership.
Just a second, Chris. I want Barbara Carboni, our town council, to, to add something here. I just want her to give her opinion as to where we should be on this.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and, and everybody. Barbara Carboni, KP Law. So I, I think it's best that the board go forward with the executive session that it had planned before making any, voting on any such motion.
And, and tell us why that you think that is, please.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to address that?
Yes, please, if you could address it.
So because a lot of good points have been raised about more information that's needed. And I think the question of whether the selectmen individually and collectively can support that motion, that, that just may not be something that can be answered right now. And I think putting the selectmen in the position of voting on something where they don't have a lot of information and committing the town to enter negotiations is, it's, that's not nothing. So I, I guess I'm just, I'm very reluctant to let the selectmen vote on or to suggest that the selectmen vote on something that is of consequence without the opportunity to have more discussion and to get the information that they need to make an informed decision on that.
Chuck, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a question for Barbara. I, I'm not sure what the, the risk and cost is. Maybe one alternative is to go into executive session, have a discussion about the pricing and offer and the return to open session to, to vote in open session without what we want to pursue. Yeah, there are a lot of contingencies. There's a lot of information that we're looking for. But I think to start the process, I support starting the process. And I don't see a lot of risk to the town to begin this negotiation. There's a lot of work to be done between now and a binding PNS agreement.
Well, I, I guess I don't want to repeat myself, but. Well, I I guess I I don't want to repeat myself, but I I I just think. Entering into negotiations is a serious thing and I I don't want. The board to get ahead of itself before it has the opportunity to learn some more and I don't think, you know, given that the selectmen. Can meet again fairly soon. I I don't think that it unduly delays this process by allowing the selectmen to have that conversation in executive session. Um perhaps coming out of execution executive session tonight, but perhaps having further discussion of this again at the next meeting.
We could also have and just based on these uh virtual meetings, I mean, we could have another meeting very soon. We don't have to wait two weeks. If if we want to if we want to have a meeting beginning of next week, Chris, we could do that, but I think. I want to kind of take town council's advice and have a discussion in executive session and I agree with Jeff. I feel like we don't have enough information at this point. Without without a discussion with advisory and without a discussion on what the real total cost of this is, not just. The cost to purchase it. I mean, you don't just buy a building not knowing what you're going to spend in total.
No, of course not. Of course not, but that's where you get the um. You know, you you go in with contingencies based on uh the 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 review.
We have to bless it. The town would have to ultimately bless it when you're able to to uh get out of the negotiation. It just allow us to move forward and hopefully secure a reasonable price, which we think it's already at, but maybe there's room.
My my problem is just working in real estate. I don't know what the reasonable price is until I know what the total costs are. It's not just the purchase price.
No one does when they're purchasing a private residence either, George, but. We're we're in a time crunch. Anyone can. You know, I get make, I don't know.
That that's Eric, go ahead.
It is a little bit of a chicken and egg thing. I do understand council's concern. But given that there's like three more bites at the apple after this and we need something to start with. So I know your concerns on the long term and I share your concerns on the long term. Uh operational costs, things are often aren't considered with this, but to allow to authorize to start some negotiation to get at least an initial capital price out of it. I think. I think helps. Do you know what I mean? It is a first step. Even if we come out of executive session, go right back into open session again, which I know is sometimes awkward with the Zoom meetings. At least it'll allow the process to get started and uh and frankly maybe help with the with the negotiation.
Chuck, go ahead.
No, I just I you know, I. I've negotiated hundreds of technology licensing deals and merger agreements. It's one thing to say. The deal isn't done until somebody signs the rights to check. There's so many steps in the process. I think we know enough to know whether or not we're interested in. In in entering to negotiations. I mean, we're going to buy it. We don't know what the price is. We don't know what the ADA compliance is. We don't know what COA can. Can raise an additional cost, but I think we need to start the process. I think there aren't a lot of. Pieces of property that fit these needs so close to the town campus. So. I with all due respect, Barbara, I disagree. I think we need to to start the process.
Sure. No, I I understand, Mr. Young. Thank you. I I do appreciate your comments, but another thing I'm not sure I quite understand is. Is this would would the select board be? Authorizing the COA to negotiate? Who is who is doing the negotiating and who is ultimately the purchaser? That that's a part of it. I don't quite understand. I'm not sure the town can authorize the COA to negotiate a deal. On the town's behalf and that's another thing that I think I would want to know more about in the selectmen respect. I should know. More about before the selectmen authorize another body to negotiate on behalf of the town. That that's another thing that concerns me.
I I agree, Barb. Just a second, Chris. I want to get David Williams to kind of chime in on this a little bit like. As the town administrator and and the chief procurement officer, like I guess how would that? It should be going through the select board, not the COA, correct?
I would say you definitely have to go through the select board. Usually in a perfect world, you'd be doing some sort of process with like an RFP process.
Right.
And say that you're looking for um. Property for such purpose. Then you would let them pitch the idea to you and then you would look through them, but this is focused on one property. You know, under a time crunch and that's that's different than going out and trying to. Include everybody on an RFP process.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I mean, nothing would stop the COA from having productive discussions um with the seller, you know, through its agent. Um about some other aspects of the property, including what the sale price might be, but I it. I just can't recommend that the selectmen authorize another body to negotiate on its behalf.
I I agree with you, Bob. I wouldn't. I wouldn't want to do that either. Go ahead, Chris.
Yes, now I write my proposal that I just read to you. I I it was the it was the town that would be entering the the negotiations. There's certainly no uh uh thought on our part for the COA to be doing negotiations. That would be the town because.
You know, we're looking to the town.
We're looking to the town. To to purchase this, but we're giving a a lot of money. Through our friends association in the state. No, we 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 not we're not assuming that we're going to be doing the no, not at all.
So it would be the town. So I think. Yeah, I would like to take our personally as a one of the five board members. I'd like to take our town council's advice, have a discussion executive session. We can even come out of executive session later tonight. Or we could have a meeting next week if we need to, but I I really would like to have an executives discuss executive session discussion before we vote on anything.
All right, that's with me. I I would like to hear from I see that we have some seniors. Here and I'd like to hear what they think about it, if that's okay with you, George.
Yeah, if anybody would like to speak, please. I I can't see everybody's video because it's on one screen, but if people go into the chat and say they'd like to speak, I can recognize. So. I guess I'd like to hear from the other board members if.
Okay.
I I see Sarah Tipton raised her hand. If go ahead, Sarah.
Right. Well, I was on the board um or the group that um. Was uh interviewing for our COA director and I have to say. I was embarrassed and they were somewhat amazed and appalled at that we didn't have a senior center, given that um most towns did. Um and we didn't even show them the room that they would have to be that she Sue Leshu had to um. Be dealing with. Um so I've lived almost 50 years and um. I my kids went through the school. The last I've been supporting the um. The schools and I'm glad to do that, but I feel as that the town needs to support us now.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to take. I don't see any other.
Can I just say one one more thing, George?
Yeah, go ahead, Mary Ann.
I would be happy. You probably don't want me there, but if you want me to go into executive session, I think we could probably. Cut to the chase pretty quickly. To give you an idea and I'd rather not talk about it. Now.
Okay, well, I think I'd have to pick a barometer of the board because I think. Initially, I'd like to have a discussion with just our board and our town council and and decide like. You know, where we'd like to be, that kind of thing, where we're at now and and go from there, but then maybe if you could be available, we could add you in. If we if we have questions.
If, okay, that's fine. That's fine.
Tricia?
Um I just process wise, if you go into executive session tonight. How do you reach us to say you're back? How does that all work? And then if you do it tonight and if not, are you all planning to come? Please tell us you're not taking off to the Cape or somewhere this Saturday. Because we'd love for you to come in for that two hour window that Mary Ann has an open house at the property. I think.
You should see it.
I'm I'm around this weekend and I'm happy to come by and see the property, so.
And can I just say one more thing?
Um I go ahead, Sue.
Um I think, you know, we we decide, you know, we came in here tonight looking for support. So we could at least move forward. So we do have the items that um Eric. Wanted to do and um you know, Jeff can help set up with advisory or whatever, but I think we were basically looking for a blessing. To move forward and to start. The process.
I think that's why we need to discuss it in executive session.
I'm thinking maybe, George, we shouldn't set expectations that will come back out of executive session. I think. We could meet, like you said, next week uh early.
Let me let me find out. I can actually text Steve Leahy right now and ask him when their next meeting is at advisory and if they've even have you even talked to them about this yet, Chris?
No, you were our first step.
Okay, I just want I want to get them involved and I want them to have an idea of what we're even talking about.
Yes.
I think they should be jumping in on this conversation rather than later.
You might want to just get like I said, get the barometer of the board because I suspect others may want to support. To to support this sooner rather than later. Like I for one, even if it's not ideal under the open meeting law with Zoom, like to come like to vote and comment back into open session tonight. Because I think I do understand the time might be the essence in order to do some of this and might want to answer some questions. I sense all those might feel the same way, Chuck or Paul.
Go ahead.
As usual, I agree with Eric.
All right, um I see Susie Tyler waving her hand.
Yeah, yeah, as I'm sitting here in the dock. Um I have a question. If you're going to reach out to um. The advisory board to look at the um uh potential financial issues. Could you also possibly reach out to the library committee? Or or the library board because it was also my understanding that the the community room downstairs, 150 uh person occupation. Was supposed to be geared towards the senior the the seniors in town. And so I'd like you to reach out to them also, especially given the fact that the town now is committing into well over seven million. Where we thought it was going to be the one million. So I I I'd like to have that all cleared up as to what the usage is for that room downstairs.
Whoever Kenneth Adams is, if you could mute yourself, I'm getting a lot of feedback from from your. Thank you. You done, Susie? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just like the library, the library, the issue of the usage of the rooms downstairs. That we are all paying for. I'd like that readdressed and revisited because. My understanding was it was also supposed to be for the council on agings. And geared towards them. So I just like that cleared up. If you're going to go out and reach out to all these other people, do that at the same time.
I agree. Thank you, Susie. Paul?
I'm going to say I agree with Eric and I agree with Chuck. We should have an executive session. We should come back. I'm mindful of the fact that the council on aging asked for. This meeting with the board two weeks ago. And it took us this long to get to this point. And before they had asked for it two weeks ago, they had already spent a fair amount of time and energy on this thing. So they've been working on this for a while now. And this property is on the market. It's available to anybody. And we're doing this in public as opposed to in executive session. We've identified the property. All that kind of stuff. So it's it's not a good idea. To delay this process. And as I as I understand it, they're looking for basically a conceptual vote. That we're in favor of doing. Opening in negotiations for a senior center.
Yes.
And we're not committing to particular details at this point for particular price because we don't know it. Or any of the details which are going to be investigated. So to to me, it sounds to me like this is the kind of thing that we could come back into public session. And get this thing done. Hopefully get them. And us moving in a direction that's going to provide more information and more choices for us to consider down the road.
I have one other person who raised her hand. I don't know your name, but you, yes, you had labeled as iPad. If David, if you could unmute her.
I can't. She has to unmute herself.
Can you unmute yourself? There you go.
There you go.
Thank you. I'm Susan Purse. I'm the secretary of the uh. COA board at the moment. A former library trustee. I'd just like to address the issue of the library space. And uh that in has not ever in any way been designated space for the COA. It has been out there for as a community space. Uh and of the COA, of course, would benefit from the. The uh large. Space for programs, et cetera, which we now uh use for the town hall and other places in town. But I don't think that it is correct to assume. That uh the library space is in any way a designated. COA space and that this number five Washington Street or Maple Corner where my son went to nursery school. Is uh would be for us a huge plus in the community and something that we as a board have worked for. For a number of years and as as you can tell from the comments of of our other board members who are. Highly representative in this visual um Zoom. That uh something we are hoping, very much hoping for the selectmen's support and that we can move forward on this. Thank you.
Yeah, um two things. Uh I did see a message that um. Mary Moore shared. Mary, are you on here?
There's a Mary, but I don't know that it's Mary Moore. I can they've had their hand raised for a while.
If you could if you could do that, I think that's Mary Moore because she just sent me a text, so.
They I can't. They're they're.
Mary, could you unmute yourself?
I thought it was Mary Wolf.
Hi, I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. If you could share your comment, I'd I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of plus one what Sue Purse just said, which is that the um space in the community center primarily on the ground floor, which is. You know, part of the a big part of the renovation, the expansion is. Not to be earmarked by any particular group, but we would expect that the council on aging would, you know, use it extensively for their programming, but. Part of our grant requires that, you know, the space can't be uniquely dedicated to any particular group.
Thank you, Mary. And I appreciate that information. I know. The discussion has always been that it would be used, but it can't specifically ever be designated based on the library grant information. The other thing, the other person I wanted to acknowledge, Stephen Leahy joined. I texted him from advisory, so I just wanted to update him as to what we were discussing. Jeff Waldron had suggested Steve that uh advisory take a review of the cost related to. The purchase of Five Washington Street for COA senior center. And so we'd get an analysis as to what it would cost the town to buy that. So Steve, have you? Even been aware of this at all or or when's your next meeting? Is it something that advisory could jump on?
Hey, George and all. Uh no, this is news to me. Um had not crossed my inbox or. No, not this is the first time I've heard of that. So Five Washington is what at the corner where 1627 come together?
Yes, that's the yellow office building. The COA is proposing entering into negotiations to purchase it for the use of a senior center. And they have some just to update from what we've heard tonight. They have donations from the friends of the. COA and the COA some designated money from the state, I think 100,000 from that and was it 200,000 from the friends of COA? Is that what I heard? The purchase price of the building is about 600,000. Based on what it's being asked, but I know Mary Ann is a crewed negotiator, but um the uh. So they would be coming to the town for looking for approximately 300,000 for the purchase plus whatever. Costs would be associated with making the building ADA compliant and and up to becoming a municipal building. Plus, we talked about the. The lost revenue section of taking a building off the tax rules as it becomes a municipal building. So we just wanted to see. If advisory could jump on this.
Okay, um I'll tell you what, why don't I do the following? If I can re I will. Reach out to whom on COA is leading the charge on this that I could speak with?
Chris Winterfell? Chris, would you be the right person?
And our director, Sue Colleen. I mean, no. Losing it. Yeah, our director. The two of us are in the charge, so I'd be happy to speak with you. I don't know you, um but I'm. Introducing myself to you. So yes, we'll talk. What what is your position? I I I don't know you, so.
I'm sorry, Stephen Leahy is the chair of advisory.
Oh, okay, very good. Yes. Okay, Stephen.
So George, Pete Hoglund's had his hand up. I don't know if he mishit the button or if he wants to talk.
Okay, Pete, did you want to make a comment?
I think most of the the arguments have been presented, the great opportunity and so forth. And the one thing I keep coming back to is we look at what seniors contribute to the town, roughly 65% of their taxes. We're contributing a lot of money and this seems such like such a bargain. Even though I realize we're going to be operating costs as we go forward, but they're going to be operating costs in any kind of building that we try to buy. And it just seems like it's it's it'd be a tough thing to pass up if we can make it work. And it just seems like it's, it's, it'd be a tough thing to pass up if we can make it work.
Thanks, Pete.
And George, remember Pete used to be the town treasurer and a professor of finance at Babson. So his opinion has a lot more weight than all the rest of us.
There's a few of us on here who got some, got a few degrees from Babson, so.
Steve, I just forwarded you the packet that was sent to us with a bunch of information on it.
Excellent. Okay. Tell you what, um, deal, tell you what, guys, I'll take a look at the packet that Chuck has forwarded. I'll make sure the other members of advisory are aware. And I will reach out to the people on COA just so I get full details. And I will ensure that we start the process of taking a look at this from the advisor's point of view next time we have a meeting. Or I should say, I'll, I'll get the information out to advisory prior to our next meeting. We'll have it discussed at our next meeting.
And one thing, Steve, if anybody on advisory wants to know, what was the hours on Saturday that you're going to have the open house if anybody wanted to go see it?
10 to 12.
10 to 12 on Saturday, okay.
And Stephen, I'd like to have you come because as chair of advisory, this is important. They're going to be wearing masks and social distancing at the, at the property at five Washington. So if you can and you feel comfortable, please, please do come.
10 to 12. I'll do my darndest to make it.
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
And can I just, about that open house, I do think it's, Christina made a great point. We have a responsibility to only have certain number of people. There can't be more than 10. And I'd like to keep it to significantly less than that. So if you, and if you could try to come toward the beginning of the 10 to 12, because I have to let people go in slowly or separately. So anyhow, I'm trying to accommodate everyone's needs. The town of Sherburne, who is very concerned about open houses, so not everyone can go in at the same time.
Right. Thanks, Mary Ann. Okay, so I think the plan is then we're going to go into executive session after our open session here. And then I think the desire of most of the board is to come back out. So maybe Chris and Tricia, we could get, you can get your numbers to David so he can let you know when we're done with the executive session. And, and you'll know that our open session is reopening. Anybody else?
What number?
If anybody else would like to be notified, maybe we can do that.
Oh, you mean our telephone numbers?
Yeah, something so you know that we're back. Or you could sit in a waiting room or something. I don't know how this is going to work, but David, do you think that would work? You're muted, David.
Can we email you our numbers, David?
Yes.
Check your email and we'll email you our, our cell phones.
So then, so then you can be aware when we come back out of executive session.
Okay, George?
Yes.
Just about what, are you going into executive?
Yes, they are. So we'll come back. We're going to come back.
Oh, I, I want to know, are you going into executive session right now or at the end?
No, we're going to finish our open session because we have three items on our executive session, so.
I was mistaken. Okay.
So.
It's going to be later. We've got to keep the open session going here.
Okay, that's fine. Well, what time do you think this will be? I'm getting into my pajamas after.
I don't know. We don't have a lot more on our agenda. I don't think the election stuff's going to take very long, right, Jackie?
No.
Okay.
And, you know, we've got a few things. And then we've got, I would say, it's 8:43 now.
Yeah.
9:30, is that the good estimate? Does everybody think?
Yeah. Oh, well, I'll, might still be like.
We generally go till midnight.
Oh, no.
Chris, I'll try to move it along as fast as possible.
Thank you, George.
Paul.
What was that? All right, so what, Tricia and I should.
Right now, I'm texting, I'm emailing David Williams our cell. Okay.
So I'm going to move on to our next item because we're not going to talk about anything right now until after we have an executive session. Thank you for all your.
George, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. All right, so our next item on the agenda is an update on annual town election 623 in consideration of possible closure of town offices that day. Jackie, do you want to fill us in where we're at?
Yeah, so I'm, so the first thing is I'm assuming that you guys all got the mailer that I did to try to get everyone in town to do the mail-in early voting. And so far I've got, I, it's pretty well, the last few days I have about 160 early vote applications and about 40 absentee ballots. And I, I think they're going to be coming fast and furious, so I'm, I'm pleased about that. The other thing is, is that we will have to have the in-person polling because on the 23rd and because we have a Sherburne bylaw that says we have to be open for 12 hours, I cannot ask you guys less than it, you know, the, the minimum for, from the state is four hours, but because we have the Sherburne bylaw, and I actually went to town council and got a ruling on that, and we have to be open the minimum of 12 hours. So the warrant that I presented to you guys is to vote from seven in the morning till eight at night. That's our normal timeframe. Right now I have, my regular election workers have all passed on working the election. I have Renee Montella, my warden, who's going to work. And I also have one other election worker. But I, I'm not panicking about that right now because I did request a waiver from elections and I got approval yesterday that I can use fewer election workers. So I'm hoping between the voting by mail and that that will, it will keep the amount of people coming into the off, to town hall low. But I still have to be open all day. And then I'm, I'm trying to get like college kids, some other people have offered to help, so I'm going to have emergency election workers for the election, but I'm not concerned. I think I'll have it staffed and we'll be fine. So I need you guys to vote on the warrant as presented so that we can get it posted. And just the other thing to update you guys is that I will have masks, gloves. I did spend some money on sneeze guards to use at the annual town election and also at town meeting to protect the election workers from, you know, on the check-in and checkout, et cetera. And, you know, we'll, we'll be social distancing for the people to come in at the election. I'll block off booths. You know, so we're, we'll be doing everything that we can to try to keep everyone as, as safe as possible.
Thank you, Jackie. I really appreciate all the work you've put into this. And I know you've spent a lot of time planning this and planning it well.
Yeah, so I just want to let you guys, I, I would just encourage everyone who's on that's a Sherburne resident, please get your early voting application in right away because of the COVID-19 situation. You know, I'm short-staffed and it's, it's, it's a big process. So I would just like to get as many, I started sending the ballot packets out today. And I'm hoping that, you know, by the beginning of next week, I'll be pretty caught up. But I, like today, I probably got 60 applications. So, you know, I just have no idea how many people are going to want to vote.
Thank you. Paul, I see your hand up. Go ahead.
Couple of things. I had a recent conversation with Michelle Tazanari at elections. And she's telling me that if a community is shorthanded, they are willing to help place some experienced election workers from other communities with you.
Yeah, I, I actually have a, you know, I can get people through the clerk net, but I, I'm really not concerned about it. I'm, I'm really, I'm not that concerned. But I, I know other clerks have reached out and we're all kind of, you know, going to each other's elections. I've been asked to work in Andover and stuff. I don't know if they're going to need me, but we are trying.
So the other point she made was that she wants town elections to go for longer rather than shorter. So those communities that do have the option to go to four hours, she says that's not a good idea because it bunches voters up. She'd rather have voters come in at the rate of, let's say, two or three an hour, which would be over like a 12-hour period. That's like 240 voters or whatever that number is versus having all those voters show up at the same time.
Right.
And then she says the experience is that they haven't seen each other in a long time. They're
That's.
They're hugging and how we've been and all that kind of stuff that we don't want to see happening. I mean, it's, it's wonderful that people are affectionate in, in Sherburne and it's nice to see people you haven't seen in two months.
Yeah.
But not, not in elections.
Right.
The there was another point that she.
The warrant, the warrant article I presented to you is that we will have polling hours from seven in the morning till eight at night. That's 13 hours. And I'm, I'm also asking if you guys would consider closing town hall to employees because we are.
She wanted me to pass on to the town clerks that I represent was that you cannot deny the right of anybody to vote because they're not wearing a mask.
Right.
Great to say that people have masks, but you can't, the, the right to vote is so fundamental. So she says to create a, a special table that's off by itself, that's more than six feet from everybody for unmasked voters to vote so they don't contaminate anybody else near them.
Okay.
But you can't, somebody comes in and they won't wear a mask, you still have to allow them to come in and vote.
Even with the governor, because she did send out an email that because the governor dictated that everyone is supposed to have a mask when they're in public. And she never got back to the clerks a follow-up to that.
Well, that's because the American Civil Liberties Union has jumped into the fray.
Right.
And they're threatening lawsuits against everybody. And I, I don't think the town of Sherburne wants to make it to the front page of like the New York Times being sued by the American Civil Liberties Union.
Right. No, I, I did get an email from the Board of Health today and, and I, I did send some information that Michelle had said, but I do realize that, and we are really, the decision-making has to be based on election law because you cannot deny someone the, their right to vote.
Exactly.
All right, so I'll take a motion to approve the warrant that Jackie had, that we had in the packet. Second from, moved by Paul Durensis, second by Mr. Yan. I'll take a roll call vote, Mr. Durensis.
Actually, George, I think we need to have the specific, Jackie put together a very nice summary of the motion.
Oh, okay, sorry.
I think we need to, I would move to vote to approve and then sign the June 23, 2000 annual town election warrant as presented at this meeting per MGL chapter 39, section 10. I would also move to close town hall on election day, June 23, 2020 due to COVID-19 emergency and then only be open to registered voters coming in to vote and then all employees not associated with the election work from home or behind closed doors.
Thank you, Chuck. Do I have a second? Thank you. I have a second from Mr. Durensis, so we'll take a roll call vote on those two motions together. Mr. Durensis?
Durensis votes aye.
Mr. Waldron?
Aye.
Mr. Yan?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson? You're muted, Eric.
Read my lips, aye.
I just wanted to make it official. I voted aye as well, so my vote of five to zero. Both motions are approved. Thank you, Jackie. We really appreciate all the work you're putting into this.
Thank you. Okay, one more thing. Now you guys actually have to come to town hall individually and sign the warrant so we can have it posted.
Okay, it has to be signed by each of us individually or does it get signed on our behalf or?
No. It has to be signed.
Okay.
Okay.
So if everybody can try to get in there in the next day or so.
Well, just, yeah, you just call me and, and let me know what time you're going to be there just so that I may, especially if you're coming really early in the morning, just so I know that I'm at the office.
Okay.
Will you be there tomorrow, Jackie? It's Friday.
Yes.
Okay. What times are you there, Jackie?
I'll be there this weekend, most likely, so.
Jackie, what are your hours tomorrow so we can try to make?
I mean, I can come in whenever. I, I mean, it doesn't matter. I can come in as early as seven or 7:30. It doesn't matter to me.
No, I'm just saying, what are your regular hours? And I'll just make it so I can be there when you're there naturally.
It all depends. A lot of time, it, it, since the office isn't open, like this morning I was there at 7:30, but sometimes I don't go in until nine because I'm working at, I'm doing emails at home. So, so it doesn't matter.
Okay.
Okay.
I can go in tomorrow by 7:30 and, and I'll be there pretty much all day.
Does tomorrow at nine work for you?
Yes.
See you then.
I have a meeting at 9:30 for work, so I'll probably be in after that.
Okay, yeah, I'll be, I'll plan on being there around 7:30 and I'll be there all until the, until late afternoon, probably.
Thanks, Jackie.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you.
I was just going to add one quick comment. She's been working with the coronavirus team and the Board of Health throughout all this. All, all the things she's talked about have been reviewed by them and input there also. So the plans are well vetted.
Thanks, Jeff. Consideration of administrative items and routine business, Finance Director, Sharon. I think you're muted. Just a second. David's, there you go.
Right. Um, I, today I actually sent out an email of a finance update where we stand through May 28th and we're tracking well. We're doing about two, 3% better than we had budgeted, so that's, that's good news. I also sent out information on what we've spent so far to date on COVID-19 unbudgeted expenses. And year-to-date compensation is $27,334 and other expenses, $35,159. So the total year-to-date is only $62,494. I've been working with the COVID-19 team because there is money available to the town of Sherburne through the CARES Act. So we are eligible for federal coronavirus aid relief through the Economic Security Act. And based on the population, we are eligible for $382,736 from March 1st through December 30th. So what I did was I created a spreadsheet for all of the departments to project the first, the first phase is March 1st through June 30th, what they think they're going to spend on eligible expenses. All that data is due back to me by tomorrow, close of business. I plan on consolidating all that information over the weekend. And then on Monday, when the, the, the group meets, I'll share what the projection is for this fiscal year. And we may have to, you know, revisit, get a little more creative. This is actually, has to be filed by June 5th. David needs to sign off on it. And there's this lovely webpage that I have to go in and put all the data in. So I will keep you all posted, but it's a group effort here and.
One clarification, Sharon, I think what you're submitting by June 5th is just the March 1st till June 30th number, not, not the full year number.
Right, and it's, it's a projection and it's based on what's, what's allowable.
So we'll resubmit in July or sometime for July 1st to December 31st.
Absolutely.
Yeah, because it's probably hard to know right now what we're going to have to spend going that far in advance, I would imagine.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're, and they're, they're definitely providing flexibility on this because it's, it's, it is difficult. But one, one of the big things that we really need to get our arms around is what the costs are associated with getting our building, you know, our town buildings safer for employees. And that's, I know it's a big cost and Sean's working on pulling that together. And also the schools are looking at a few things, you know, remote learning and additional costs that they've incurred. And I, I reached out to, to Jeannie regarding farm pond, a lot of things there and in getting that. So there's, there's a lot of things that we need to look at and make sure that we cover all our bases. But I'll keep you all posted.
Includes our election also.
Absolutely, yeah.
To do the annual town meeting rather, and the election, but the annual town meeting.
Yep, Jackie, I reached out to Jackie.
Yeah, I've already submitted the money that I've spent already, so.
Yeah, to figure out what the, along with Mary Wolf, Jackie, talking about what's going to be required of a town meeting in August as well. But that'll be the second submission.
That'll be the second. Yeah, we're, we're working on that. We're trying to figure it out.
By the way, it, it's a sort of digression, but Dover just announced today that they're going to try and do a virtual town meeting via Zoom.
No, Mary's, Mary Wolf is actually going to, I was just, I was going to call on her during Sledboard reports, but she.
All right, I, I'll, I'll wait.
So Mary.
I actually spoke to the town clerk today too, so.
I have the Dover letter.
I, I had a call today from, if, if you want me to speak, or can?
Yeah, go ahead. You can talk about it now. Go ahead.
Okay, so I had a call this afternoon from Jim Ropetti. He's the moderator over in Dover. And their plan currently, there can be. And um, their plan currently, it, there can be no remote meetings for open town meetings, first of all. That's not allowed. Their um, plan right now is they are going to hold their town meeting on June twenty-second. It's a Monday and they're holding it at eleven AM and they're holding it in the high school football field. And um, they're doing that for, you know, the obvious reasons. Jackie, myself, Zach and Daryl, uh, had a brief meeting this morning where we sort of kicked off a discussion of what are the options available to us and um, you know, let's do a little research and find out what is the safest experience that we can reasonably offer to the people in the town to um, make them feel secure. There is um, a bill that I think I've mentioned a couple of times and um, I think some of you have mentioned it also, uh, going through the legislature right now about uh, lowering the quorum. Originally the select board could uh, vote to lower the quorum for town meeting if they also limited the warrant to only the financial articles. When that um, bill moved from one chamber to the other, the language changed and omitted was the idea of having to limit the warrant to the financials. It's not clear whether that language will come back in the next iteration or not, but um, as of now, you would not, if, if you chose to lower the quorum, you would not have to stick with strictly financials. Some of the things we talked about, you know, um, generally accepted is that amount of virus plus amount of exposure increases your, your danger of contracting it. And um, so anything that we can do to limit either of those two things. We're currently scheduled to hold it indoors. Um, holding it outdoors would, I think the group in general felt that would be safer. There are logistical anomalies there that we haven't dealt with before. There may be additional costs, but you know, what is a life worth, I guess? We need to look into all of those things further and, you know, we're, we're planning to do that, so. This is not to ask you to make any decisions tonight, but to sort of give you a heads up that we're looking at this and you might think about putting this definitely on your um, agenda for your next meeting because even at the twenty, it was twenty-fifth, I think now, of August that the meeting is scheduled for, that, that's kind of putting advisories meeting toward uh, the middle of July, really realistically, and you, you need to have your warrant set by then, although I, I did talk to Jim Repetti, they they have a, a custom there where they dismiss articles, which is not acting on them, but it does not prejudice the articles in any way. I haven't found that to be the case in this town. We, any meeting that I've ever been in, we haven't done that, but that's certainly an option, but I, you know, I'm, I don't wanna get, put the cart before the horse here, but um, I think that the group that met this morning, plus David, if he is available, um, can come up with some proposals maybe for the next meeting.
Alright, thanks, Mary. Paul, I saw your hand up. Go ahead.
So a couple of things. Uh, first of all, a couple of people have talked to me about the fact that the date we picked, the August twenty-fifth date, is getting into the season where we have this uh, eastern equine encephalitis, E-E-E. And it's also when you have West Nile. And so they were asking that last year, this was a period of time where we were approaching, telling people that they couldn't have uh, evening soccer and all that kind of stuff. They were asking, could we move it back a week or two to avoid the E-E-E threat? And the second point is, I got two points here, please. Second point was that um, what the general laws require is that voting be done in person. That being said, what we're setting up in my towns is a virtual town meeting with, on a separate day, a voting session. So let me explain how that works. Using a Zoom conference, the moderator goes through all the articles, all the PowerPoint presentations are made, all the presentations by the proponents are made, the speeches are made about the state of the town and all of that, virtually. All the articles are presented. Voters are allowed to question and answer. What does this mean? How does it work? Why are we taking these particular positions? So you spend whatever time it takes, the day before town meeting, to review the paperwork, the slides, the presentations. Then, when you get to town meeting, the moderator goes through the warrant, just calling the articles. And if no one wants any articles held, then there's one motion to adopt all the articles on the warrant as recommended by the planning board or recommended by the advisory committee. You have one vote, you go home. If there's a hold, the town of Natick is suggesting not one voter, seven voters have to call for a hold to make sure it's a serious hold. Then you have the motion to adopt all the articles as recommended by the advisory committee except for the held article. Then you discuss that article. Presumably, it's already been discussed the day before. Take the vote. Move to adjourn. Town meeting's over in two votes. So there is a role for a virtual town meeting and there's a role for the in-person voting. You combine the two, the in-person part, you limit it to the outdoors, you limit it to a football stadium, you limit it to masks, gloves, everything that you want people to do. Generally, they comply. And you have your virtual meeting. The moderator runs both. Get it done fairly safely.
Thank you, Paul. Jeff?
Two, two just clarifications. Um, one to what Paul said first. The Board of Health has been looking into this and they're advocating because of triple E that it'd be held during the day, not in the evening.
Yes, that, we, we talked about that this morning. I should have mentioned that. The, the, the date was uh, August twenty-second. That would be that Saturday.
So the concept is that it wouldn't be in the evening for.
Correct.
Second thing is I misspoke earlier. Mary, I emailed you, um, because I received it from the Dover Board of Health, but it's actually the town of Milton is planning to do their entire meeting virtually and I, it requires additional legislation, which they explained in the email. Maybe you've seen that already.
Well, are they, they're probably a representative town meeting. Is that correct?
I'm not sure. I, I forwarded the email so you can look at it. Just wanted to say I misspoke. I got it from Dover, so I thought it was Dover telling me about Dover, but it wasn't. It was Dover forwarding Milton's communication.
Right. The representative town meetings can be held remotely, not open town meetings, however.
Alright, thank you, and I think let's plan on having this on our agenda next time after, I know you've, you're having these discussions and we'll, we'll dig into it and see what we need to do at our next meeting.
That's great. Paul, could you email me the names of those towns that are going to do that? That'd be great.
Would we also be discussing, George, whether we want to reduce the quorum number?
Yeah, I think we'll have a whole, overall discussion of town meeting scheduling and quorum and we can have the whole thing on the agenda next time.
Okay.
Next thing is town administrator report. David?
Yep. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, we have um, an application going in for uh, MVP action grant application. MVP is a municipal vulnerability preparedness um, uh, grant. So uh, I have a letter to go in showing the town support. But I would also like to have the board um, take a vote of support, so I can say at the five-twenty-eight meeting, the select board voted in support of the grant to create a sustainability and resilience action plan. And that would uh, just help bolster, bolster the letter. So that's really all I was looking for. It's to accompany the application.
So moved. A second by Mr. Johnson. Roll call vote, Mr. Durensis?
Yes.
Mr. Waldron?
Aye.
Mr. Yan?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And I'll say aye. So five-zero. Thanks, David.
Thank you.
Um, under select board reports, I have a couple of quick things. Um, I wanted to update everybody that about a week ago, um, Gary Lebarsky's representative Lynn Sweet reached out to us as a town. She wanted to have a um, virtual meeting with select people that she chose. It was me, Paul, John Higley and Gino Carlucci and we suggest, and David Williams and I said, well, I'm not gonna attend unless our attorney Barb Carbone can come, and she said, well, this is not a meeting for attorneys. And I canceled the meeting because I said it's not a meeting for me then. So I just wanted to give everybody an update that that's kind of how they're, they're acting, dealing with us, so I just didn't feel it was appropriate that we had a meet, and I invited her to our meeting tonight to make any presentation that they wanted to in open session and she declined. So that was, I just wanted to give everybody an update on that that happened last week.
Good moves, George.
And I've had David also, just on land use um, initiatives. I know David's reaching out to the town of Natick and the town, and the city of Framingham, so we can have initial discussions on those intermunicipal agreements about the water and sewer directly with them and with Pulte and Baystone, so we can, you know, get things moving in, in that direction and have the conversations directly with those towns. Um, do I have any other select board reports? Paul?
Just a comment about what an excellent job was done by uh, Jeff Waldron and Mike Kickum. Quite a few people. Jeff can give you all the names, to put together a Memorial Day to remember with different vignettes from different people uh, contributing. So when you watch it, it looks just like the regular Memorial Day event, has the same, the same uh, uh, same people, the same kinds of activities. It was excellently done. Yeah, my hat's off to Jeff. I hope that Jeff will take a moment and identify all the other people who contributed to it.
Yeah, it was kind of crazy. I came up with the idea like about a week in advance and I had to convince people, but it, it's all the usual people. Mike Kickum, you know, was torn by what he wanted to do, but he couldn't do any of it, so he didn't really know what to do. And Doug Brody, I spoke to at length because he was concerned that the veterans wouldn't be recognized. So Dover Cable really, I mean, we basically made that whole show in about three and a half days, including, you know, the first calls to people if they would participate and interviewing um, the nurse in New York City who had been at the Javits Center, is now is Queens Hospital, so. Dover Cable did a ton of work. Obviously, Mike Kickum did a lot of work, the, Zach Ward, David Bento and Darrell Beersley were closely involved. All my scouting leaders were involved because they usually are um, uh, involved in the parade in some way anyways, so Carrie Lynch and um, Doug Peterson, who's the scout master, were involved. So it was a, pretty much a town-wide um, initiative to put it together, but it just was a lot of editing.
Alright, thank you. That was, I did watch it. It was, it was very well done. Thank you, everybody.
The coolest thing was, I think, the, the middle school band doing a virtual concert at the end, which came to us like fifteen minutes before we were to make the final edits, so.
That was good. Thank you. Uh, if we don't have any other select board reports, then I'm gonna close the open session and go into executive session, and we will be returning to open session. Um, I need a I guess, executive, let me read the executive session agenda. Item one, MGL chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one A, subsection three, to discuss strategy with respect to threaten potential litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the town. And the chair so declares library. Item two, MGL chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one A, subsection two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, fire chief. Item three, MGL chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one A, subsection six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body, five Washington Street. I need a motion, I, I need a motion and a, and I, I need a motion in a second.
Assuming that you determined that would be in the best.
Oh, yes, and I do, I do make the, yes, I make that.
Then I will make that motion.
Sorry. And I have a second for Mr. Durensis. I'll roll call vote, Mr. Durensis.
Aye.
Mr. Waldron?
Aye.
Mr. Yan?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So five-zero, we're now in executive session and we will be returning to open session after, after. Uh, roll call vote, Mr. Waldron?
Aye.
Mr. Yan?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Durensis?
Aye.
I vote aye. Okay, five-zero, so we're back in open session. David, are there people waiting to come in?
Yep, let me um, let me get them.
Okay. Steve Barber, do you have time for a quick call tomorrow on some of the land use stuff?
Sure, absolutely. Do you want Lee, do you want Lee involved too?
No, I'll just email you and I'd just like to touch base with you on a couple of things.
Sure, anytime. I think anytime. And just looking for my calendar.
Depends when your cat says you're available. I'm in the middle of a board meeting. We don't have ten members on our board of directors. My cat puts her rear end right up to the.
Yeah.
My uh, I have a Westie who's just thirteen, fourteen years old and he's now taking advantage because I, my office is up in a guest room upstairs and he can't climb stairs anymore on his own. If he knows I'm up here, he stands at the bottom of the bar, upstairs and barks until somebody brings him up and puts him on the guest bed so he can sleep in here.
Right. Now, I've got a dog and three cats, so if I can get through a Zoom meeting without interruption, it's, it's a good day, so.
Okay, I can see one. I can see one. Do you guys see, notice I checked out of this meeting for a few minutes? My cat walked in with a live mouse.
Oh.
Really?
Hey, that's a good cat. You're earning his keep.
That's right. A lot of drama. Then the other cat got interested and we had to run around and, yeah, so sorry about that.
Where you went.
Glad we're recording now, of course, but yeah, so it was a funny incident tonight.
Right.
You must live in the country. Mike Gemma bought our house on Course Brook. He wanted me to certify that there was no road infestation.
Good luck with that in Sherburne.
I certified that in fact there has been and you need to get a cast.
Should, uh, Sue Calhoun's there. Should I admit her, David? Are you doing it?
Yeah, go ahead. I've gotten texts to Tricia, Sue, Chris.
Chris was ready for bed an hour and a half ago.
Yeah, I know.
I didn't, I unmuted you, Sue. I didn't know, uh, because nobody's really muted because there's so few of us now.
Okay, thank you.
I guess, I, should I wait a few more minutes or can we just go ahead?
Um, I think you need to wait for them.
I mean, we're in, we're in. I mean, we're in, we're in open session, so in in theory, someone could call in and join. But I, but I think it's better to to wait if you can for a couple of minutes, yeah.
I took the lock off and I closed the waiting room.
And Chuck went to the beach.
I think I need better lighting in this room.
Let's see, the northern tip of the North Island in New Zealand, no COVID-19.
Yeah, nice.
Wow. They did mainly the South Island.
There's Tricia.
Hi, Tricia. Hello, Tricia. You're muted.
Hang on, let me try and fix that. There you go. Oops.
No, you don't.
Okay.
Welcome back.
Okay, hi.
I think we're just waiting for Chris.
Yes. I just hung up with her and said, I hope she's coming on.
I know we're keeping her up late. She wanted to go to bed an hour and a half ago.
I'm right with her. I don't know. It's all right.
You don't have to drive anywhere. You could just go upstairs.
There's no commute.
Right.
I have found that I sleep later now because I don't have to commute in the morning and I don't have to get the kids on the bus, so.
I was telling, I was telling my husband, people are going to get used to this, you know?
I think the other thing is teenagers getting used to sleeping in every day.
Yeah.
Very much.
They're going to have to move the start of school till about 11 o'clock.
No, this year's 8:30. They flipped it and.
I know. Well, the funny thing is my my daughter's in sixth grade and this morning she came in, Dad, you didn't wake me up at like 8:45. And she's like, I got a call in 15 minutes.
They're having a moving up ceremony for them, too, right, to middle school?
They are. They're, I just got the details the other day for the kids going from fifth to sixth.
Yeah.
Because I have one in that grade, too. I have one going to sixth and one going to seventh. So they're going to do an end of year Pine Hill. They're going to do it on Zoom. And then they're also going to have like a parade where we all stay in our cars to go up by the school one last time. And they're going to have a certain, like a signs for them and all that kind of thing.
Yeah, yeah. The high school one's pretty cool. The high school one, they're renting a Jumbotron.
I have a, I have a senior who's going to be part of that. That's going to be quite a scene.
Because I talk with Andy Keough and Jill Fador, the school nurse, a lot.
Oh, do you?
Yeah. Three times a week.
Pretty wild. It's pretty, they're going to walk across the stage. The parents are going to be able to get out of the car and snap photos. They're going to have a Jumbotron, I guess.
Yes. So the people queued up in their cars can see the kids ahead of them walking on the stage.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, no, I think they did a good job. I mean, the kids at Pine Hill, my daughter was upset at first because she's like, I don't agree with you, but at least they're doing something.
Yeah, a little bit of closure, right?
Yeah, exactly. So now I've got everybody on here. In our executive session, the board voted to authorize the town administrator, along with Frank Jenkins from, I think it was, that's what we decided, right? Frank Jenkins from Land Acquisition to start negotiations with the seller and explore the use of a senior center and what the costs would be to, to, in, to, for the building.
And they explored the suitability of the building for a combined senior center town, municipal town building.
So.
Probably have one caveat to make sure Frank, we haven't told Frank Jenkins. Just, just a minor detail.
Oh, my God. So tell, tell me what Frank Jenkins' official position is in this.
He's the chair of the Land Acquisition Committee.
Okay, land acquisition.
And who is the other person?
David Williams.
Oh, David Williams. Okay, terrific. And can, is David's here, right? Can David at least, can you make Saturday, David? Can you come to the building?
I'm planning on stopping by.
Oh, good.
People on the board are.
Is David here?
George, you're going to stop by?
Yes, I'm going to go to the building on Saturday morning.
I am, too. We're going to have to make sure the three of us aren't there at the same time.
Oh, good. And so David and hopefully Frank can go and look during that window, too.
Yeah.
That'll be great.
David, if you could reach out to Frank tomorrow and talk to him about it, that'd be great.
Yep.
What time do you think you guys are going? I may stop by, but not if I'm going to obviously overlap any quorum stuff.
I think that she's only inviting a few people in the building. If two of us are in the building, the other person can just wait for one of us to leave.
Sure, absolutely.
We just want to thank you all very much.
I'm so thrilled. I.
Very excited to get this going. It means a lot to a lot of people, so thank you.
We're just, we're just starting.
Yeah. I, 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 I just can't tell you, you know, you all, you're the, you're the leadership, leaders of the town. And to have this happen, you're the first stop on our journey and thank you so much. George, would you send me an email putting that proposal in writing so that I can?
I think, David, somebody must have the motion written down. If somebody could share that with Chris. I don't have it written down, so David, if you could share that with Chris, that would be great.
Yeah, I'm trying to do it right now.
Okay, great.
Okay, thank you so much.
And I think, I mean, the main thing is here, as we said, we're, numbers are concerned about the costs. So we really want to explore if this is the right alternative. I know, I understand the need for senior center, but is this the right building? We want to talk with the library. We want to explore any option that we can just to see if, I mean, I really want to make sure we're not just buying this because it's available, that it's really truly the right option for the town.
We appreciate that. We appreciate that. Right. And just, and just, George, at some point, we could even talk with you in more detail just kind of what this journey has been. That property that Sean Colleen referenced, that was something that we had been considering. The, there was space in the community center. There's a lengthy history of very in-depth kind of attempts at trying to get a center going. I'm happy to share them with you. This is, this did not come just up. And we thought, oh, this will be something fun to explore. It was not a casual thing.
No, I understand.
Timing is hard, but we have been looking at this very hard for many years. So thank you. We appreciate you guys considering, so thanks.
All right. Well, that was our last item, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right. Second from Paul. I saw his hand up, so roll call vote, Mr. Duransus.
Vote aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Waldron.
Aye.
Mr. Yan. And I vote aye. Thank you very much. Thanks for coming back.
Yep, thanks a lot.
We'll talk to you soon.
Thank you, Barbara.
Bye, thank you. Bye.